Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, at approximately five oh eight P. M. And we are gathered together as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We will begin with a roll call. Stephanie?
Stephanie Bryant, Business Administrator.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
Julie Rash, Board Member.
Melanie Hall, Board Vice President.
Jim Pedersen, Board President.
Heathretel Superintendent.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Member.
McKay Jensen, Board Member.
Nate Bryson, Board Member.
I welcome all of those of you who are here with us in person, as well as those who are joining us on YouTube. And I believe we also have some who are with us on Zoom. Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening. We'll begin this evening's study session with a construction update from Mark Wheeler, our Facilities Director.
Hi, everybody. Just a quick update before I introduce V C B O Architects. I don't have anything pressing as far as major construction projects, capital improvement projects right now. There's a couple of notable ones that we'll share next board meeting. But in the interest of time, and in case you have questions for V C B O on our Tim View project, we wanted to give the bulk of the time to them. And just to remind you where we're at with Tim View. In an agreement with the Division of State Risk, we started what we call Phase One of risk mitigation because of building settlement and collapsible soils. So right now, what you see happening at Tim View is a rebuild of the South Gym, where we saw some of the worst structural twisting taking place with that structure. There's also areas that we're working on water mitigation throughout that campus as part of this Phase One. And you've also noticed the new practice field in Benus Park on the south side, which we're continuing work in that area as well. As far as budget goes, things are still going really well with this Phase One budget. I can't say enough about Westland Construction and V C B O Architects and their engineers. They, every meeting, everything we do, they have the interests of this school district and taxpayers at the highest level of interest, so they do a very good job. Any questions for me before we give the time to V C B O?
I have one quick question. Where's the progress with the portable at Tim View? Like, where are we at with that?
Oh, thank you. So we've added some new portables throughout the district. We added one four classroom pod on the Tim View campus, which is to help us through the construction phase. And it's right there off Tim View Drive. It's hard to miss. Power was just connected today to that portable. So the next steps will be data and fire, run to those four classrooms, and then also some interior adjustments, whiteboards and things like that. So that's getting close.
And is the gym on schedule to be completed? I think you originally said January? The South Gym?
Yes, the South Gym, and that has adjusted to about mid-March-ish because of some challenges they ran into with some of the soils as they were excavating and the peer process.
Mark, would you remind us once again what the portable is going to be used for?
The portable will have four classrooms. I don't know what classrooms the Tim View Administration Team is assigning to that area, but it'll just help them with some extra space during construction.
So it's no longer going to be used for a temporary library? It will be classroom space?
Classroom space is what I understand. There's been some questions as well if that stays when the project's done. If it's not staying, it's just through construction.
Just one more question about Timpano's Park area. When will that new practice field and that area be completed?
So the practice field will be available and ready to use by spring. It gives a chance to take some root during this fall. Hopefully, we have a little bit more warm weather, but it's doing what it's supposed to do now, and it'll be ready to use in the spring. The only other things that we're working on for that practice field area will be relocating, rebuilding a pavilion, and we're still determining the best location for that. We're trying to figure out how to best place that closer to the playground on the south side.
And I noticed there was some construction up by the baseball field. Is that the ADA ramp going in up there, or is that?
So right up against that hill heading up to the baseball field, that is a retaining wall.
Okay.
Because of the adjusted grades we had to do with the practice field, it created a steep slope that we had to adjust and retain. The ADA pathways will be part of a future phase, which will eventually serve the track and field and baseball and softball eventually.
Okay.
Mark, real quickly, you've stated this before, but I was wondering if you would help me with something and just restate again. I had a citizen reach out to me and express disappointment in the fact that we were starting with athletic facilities on the Tim View rebuild first rather than with academic. And I did pass on the fact to them that the worst area of the school was the South Gym. Will you just confirm that and just help us remember why we started there?
Yes. The reason the South Gym was at the top of the list. It had partially reinforced walls with that very heavy concrete, what they call a double T roof system, which was solid concrete. And where they were witnessing and observing the structural twisting that was taking place at the corners of that structure, in coordination with our engineers and the Division of State Risk, that was the top priority to get that emptied out and rebuild that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm going to give the time out of V C B O Architecture and their team just to go through just a few slides. I'll just update you on floor plans, placement of the new design, and just a few other details. And you're welcome to ask them any questions you would like.
Vern, you're muted.
Muted. There we go. Hopefully, you guys can hear me now. Okay. Think I'm getting some feedback. Hey, well, anyway, it's good to see you guys. It's good to be here. I see a lot of familiar faces there, the faces I can see on the YouTube. I had that up and going, but I had to shut it down because of the backfeed. But we're excited to be here and give you a board update. With our team, we've also got Mike Riery here that will be assisting. He's kind of the technology guy, but he's also our day-to-day project manager and knows everything there is to know about Tim View High School. He's had a chance over the last two years to really dig into that school. And so what we want to do is just kind of quickly introduce sort of why we're here, how did we get here, and where we're currently going, and give you a quick update. And then if you guys have questions, we can address those along with Mark at the end. So some of you are new, and so we'll just quickly go through these really quick, but how did we get here? So you guys are probably aware, and some, I'm sure most of you are aware now, that there were signs of building settlement that had initiated an investigation that occurred. That investigation uncovered the existence of wet collapsible soils under the school, especially on the southern and western ends of the school. We had also that the school had experienced some settlement as a result of those, and that settlement seemed to be worsening over time. Extensive coordination had taken place between our team, engineers, and also the State Division of Risk Management. And we all got together to formulate a plan as we went forward. The plan that was, that we came up with was basically designed to reduce the risk by focusing on eliminating and controlling surface water and rebuilding portions of the campus with the greatest signs of settlement. Mike, you want to go to the next slide? Oh, there we go. Do I have control? Can I do that? Okay, Phase One Site Plan. So the red outline that you guys see there on the screen, hopefully you guys are able to see that. That red outline is the existing building, the existing school. And so we wanted to show you that so we could identify to you and show you kind of those areas where we did see the most settlement and kind of what we're taking as a direction to remediate those. So most of that settlement, Mike, maybe you can kind of put your scroller over it, but it was in that west wing, the west academic wing that's shown there. So we're eliminating, and it's going to be demoed, and also at the South Gym. So the South Gymnasium is being reconstructed now. You guys have seen that construction happening, and bid documents are being put together currently for the demolition and reconstruction in another location on campus of the classroom wings. It's going to go to the north. So as you look at this site plan, you can see the classroom wing is to the north, and we still have student and event parking in the south, excuse me, in the northwest, and also in the east. There's the northwest, there's the east. The bus drop-off will remain at its current location. They're on the northwest corner. And then we have a new large student parking area that is on the sort of southwest end of the campus. But that new parking area is directly adjacent to the new main entrance of the school, and we'll show you some exterior imagery here in a moment. Also, there is a new soccer field. There is a new softball field, football home bleachers, and two tennis courts that are also included into the package. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, Mike. Mike is going to jump in here, and Mike is going to help out with, kind of walk you guys through the floor plans.
Perfect. Hey, we're excited about these floor plans and the updates that have happened here. Just so you know, last year in two thousand and nineteen, when we developed our full replacement plan, we did a lot of development with staff, admin, multiple departments at the school. Also, we had students and parents involved as well, and they provided a lot of feedback. But all that input was put into a program of spaces. And this new layout has been able to use that program of spaces that was developed back then. So we were able to really jump in and get this design moving quickly. But just to give you a quick little rundown on the floor plan and where parts and pieces are landing, you can see here we have a Level One, Two, and Three. Now, in reality, at Tim View, there's multiple levels because of how the site slopes on the, well, on the site it slopes. And, but we've broken it down into three basic levels. But you can see here, up here in the north, this represents a new three-story classroom wing. My screen is, just went dark. Did it go for you? Vern, are you seeing my screen?
No, it went dark.
Oh.
We can see it.
Can you? Well, I paused. I'm going to try one more time here. For some reason, it just went out on me. Try this one more time.
There we go.
Well. Vern, do you want to try sharing it? I apologize. My screen's just flipping here.
Yeah, Mike, can you hear us? We can see the slides okay. So do you want to describe that new wing on the north end?
Okay, yeah. Okay, so you're seeing the same slide that we had up then, correct? With the three levels? Okay. Okay, perfect. Well, up there on the north, on that top part of the sheet, is our three-story new academic wing, okay? And it houses all the new academic classrooms, as well as preschool, the foods lab. It also will house all of our science labs on the third floor. So if you look on the far right, you can see on the far right, on Level Three, there's ten new science labs, okay? And then the rest of them are scattered throughout. But this is a very efficient way of handling this new floor plan here, stacking it out here. Now, part of this, as it heads further to the north and further to the east, is going to be quite, it's not buried, but it's going to be down low compared to the surrounding grades. If you can remember, that parking lot out there up on the north and on the east, the student parking, it's quite steep. And so part of this classroom ring will be dug into that hillside a little bit, and we'll be able to soften it with some grading and things. But then as you, as you look on the left plan, which is Level One, we're making a connection with the existing South Commons, okay? With a new performing arts lobby that will be right outside of the auditorium space. And then, like Vern mentioned a few moments ago, the new main entrance for the school will be on the south, right off of that admin on the southwest corner of the existing Commons. And so we'll have a new face for that south wall of the existing Commons built in, and that will be the new face of Tim View right there. Then, as you head further south, the existing gym, the North Gym is what we call it, right adjacent to the Thunderdome, that's going to be remaining intact currently. And the plan is to be doing a extensive structural retrofit in that space, where we will be removing the flooring and the bleachers and cutting into the floor to put new helical piers in to stabilize that part of the building. We'll also be doing reinforcing in the roof structure as well to reinforce it. That area will get heavily remodeled, which means it will look like a new gym when it's done. New paint and new floor and new bleachers and things. And then as you head further south on Level One, this is where our new athletics portions will reside. We'll have locker rooms, athletic trainer. We'll have space for P E coaches, also P E weights and dance, things like that. Now, if you can imagine, go to the plan just to the right of that, which is Level Two, right above those locker rooms is where we are going to have the new, what we are calling the Clean C T E. And that represents your marketing and business, your designing, sewing, media production, and then also the engineering and drafting and robotics, okay? Now, if you head back over to Level One, so that's the left plan. Right just north of the Thunderdome, you can see a purple area. That area is going to be repurposed and remodeled to be our new special ed wing, where we'll have two new functional skill spaces and classrooms dedicated to the special ed population of the school. Okay. That's the floor plan in a nutshell. See, on the very south part of the building is our new South Gym, our auxiliary gym, which is under construction right now. And then the white space right next to that is the existing weight room that you know of already. Do you want to skip to the next slide? The next slide represents, is a couple pictures of some 3D views of what the building is currently looking like in its design state. You can see, I believe it's the top picture, is the new three-story academic wing that you would see from the north or from Quell Valley Drive. And that area on the right is the new entrance for the bus loop. So students will be able to go right in through that entrance on the north to get into the Commons, okay? But that's not the main entrance for the school. On the lower picture is the new main entrance for the school. We wanted to feel grand and be very welcoming. You can see a lot of the architecture here is trying to pay homage to the current Tim View school because lots of this school is going to stay. We want it to feel like a cohesive campus. We want it to feel like it was meant to be together. And so we're trying to tie all those parts and pieces together and have it work architecturally. Vern, you have any comments about that? We'll jump right into the scheduled last slide.
Maybe add really quick, you know, one of the things that we're trying to accomplish here is, you know, it's, we're not replacing the entire school, but at the same time, we need to somewhat pay homage to the existing facility and not it architecturally. And so we're trying to relate to it, kind of take the best of what was in the original school, replicate that, and make it feel like it all fits, and make it feel like it was always there, and make it feel like it was a campus, if you will. And so that's why you're seeing, even though the existing brick is kind of that reddish brick, you know, you're seeing the new areas that are kind of a lighter brick, but it also all ties together as a campus.
Okay. The last slide represents our current design and construction schedule. I'll walk you through this briefly. On the far left, you can see where we started with the new South Gym demolition and construction. That phase will go through March of two thousand and twenty-one, and that new South Gym will be complete. In May of two thousand and twenty-one is where we'll finish all the design drawings, and all the new construction will be bid in May, and construction will start in June of two thousand and twenty-one for the new classrooms and that special ed remodel area. That will take roughly two years to complete. And by June of two thousand and twenty-three, the classroom ring will be done, and we'll be able to move over from the south and west academic wing. The existing wings, we'll be able to move those over into the new over the summer. As soon as that move starts and we're able to start demolition on the south and west academic wings, we'll get into that, and then we jump right into the new athletics portions. Okay, this new athletics includes new P E and varsity locker rooms, includes athletic training, site improvements, where we already talked about the softball field, bleachers, things like that. It'll include new dance, new north structural gym retrofit and upgrades. And then upstairs, like I said, it includes that new C T E, the business, the computer science, robotics, et cetera. That will start June and July of two thousand and twenty-three, and it will end in June of two thousand and twenty-four, and then we'll be able to move everything over at that point. So that takes care of the current construction phase schedule for Tim View. We'll have to open it up to any questions anybody has. And in the meantime, I'd like to see if I can share my screen again so I can maybe zoom into a couple of things.
Board members' questions for V C B O?
I just have one quick question. In the industrial ring that you said is going to turn into the special ed, will we still keep the shops in that area too?
Yes, good question. The special ed is on Level One, and the shops, looks like, I'm not able to share again. The shops are on Level Two, and they remain intact. So good question. So that, all your auto and your woods and your welding, those will all remain on Level Two.
So I have a couple of questions. So I go to a lot of stake meetings, and even with the new governor-elect on almost all of his education documents, he wants to address the cost of school construction. Is there any, now that we're in the, in the design phase, what type of things, what types of strategies are there in the design that are we using to control costs?
Well, you know, one thing that I could add is, is we have done a lot of schools, and we do take meeting our budgets very seriously. You know, the number one thing that we, that we have working for us is the fact that we do have a C M G C on board. And you've got not just a C M G C, but a great C M G in Westland Construction that built Provo High School. We are working with them daily and weekly to make sure that we hit these schedules, or well, to hit the budgets that we have. But in terms of school construction itself, we do understand the materials that need to be used to meet these budgets, the means and methods that are going to be necessary to meet the budgets. And we also have a pretty good understanding that where we can, just as a firm, we always try to locate, just to give you an example, we always try to locate toilets on top of each other and stack them in our plans. Toilets and plumbing, and Mark could attest to this too. There's a lot of copper that goes into putting a high school bathroom in, and that's quite expensive. And so we want to make sure that we've consolidated all of our wet areas as much as we possibly can in the school. And so we take steps to try and do that as we're doing the programming and doing the schematic design. There's a lot of other, a lot of other things that we also look at in terms of our detailing as well. And so we try and keep our detailing as simple as possible, and we try and keep the details that are utilized as maintainable as possible too, because, you know, you've got to maintain this building for the next seventy years as a district. And so we want to make sure that we're leaving you with a great product that can be maintained over that time, but it's very cost-effective also. But anyway, I think the biggest single thing that we are doing is working with Westland Construction to make sure that we hit your budgets that you have.
Great. And I know that, you know, one of the comfort levels with V C B O is how many buildings that you are doing across the state and have done. And are there any lessons that you're learning from some of those other buildings? We're already getting questions about, are you going to tour some of these people? And my response right now is, well, we have the architects that built those buildings. Or what lessons that have you learned in other places that you're bringing into Tim View?
Mike, you want to tackle that? I'm happy to as well. But one thing that we have run into right now is, you know, despite the issues over this past year with COVID, construction is still at a pretty high end. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of projects that are taking place. Those are dropping off, and so labor is coming more and more available. We did learn a lot of lessons when things were at their peak, especially in regards to certain trades like masonry. We did learn that you want to make sure that you get, if not one, but two mason companies on a project of this size. If we can't get a big one, then we at least need to have two medium-sized companies. And that's where, again, we return to Westland because they're learning those same lessons as well. But masonry is one of the biggest areas where if you get behind, it's really hard to catch up. And that's right out of the gates as well. Another area too is site work, and Westland has done a great job with site excavation, site work. But all of those upfront efforts are where we're seeing challenges created on the back end. Again, Westland is taking it very seriously. They're making sure that they got the manpower there to mitigate and control those schedules and make sure that we can meet the overall project schedule. But there are a lot of lessons learned. This year has been anything but predictable, for sure. And so we're learning all the time of things that we can do and things that we can change, especially system-wise too, to help save cost and mitigate cost.
So obviously, also, we have, you know, when we've told the community that part of our building is falling down because of the site, building collapsible soils, there's some concern about the site. Can we take any comfort that we're moving a large new area towards the northeast, where we've had, you know, a little bit better drainage and everything else? Is, are we feeling fairly confident that you mentioned seventy years, that these walls are going to hang in for seventy years?
Vern, you want me to share some thoughts there? Yeah, no, we feel extremely confident with the placement of the new building, but especially with the structural approach that we're taking on this design, anything that's going to be new will be built on helical piers, similar to what we're doing on the structural retrofit of your North Gym. And so the, this new north addition will be built on piers. Well, we will drill down about forty, approximately forty feet, and stabilize the building on that more suitable soil. And so where we're placing it, yes, it is better soils up there, but it's also, we're bypassing any possibility of bad soils for the future because we're bypassing those and building right onto the good stuff.
That was, that was one reason why we purposely tried to avoid the new location of that west parking lot, the new student parking area. And that's where your west wing was prior. That is an area also that we saw the greatest amount of settlement. So we purposely tried to avoid that area with the new construction.
Could you share with us other improvements we will see from current classrooms to what they will see in the new building, such as, is there improved sizes of classrooms, light, things like that?
Yeah, we anticipate, you know, that we will see some improvements in the daylighting. Is that, hopefully, that, I had a hard time hearing your question, but I think it was in reference to natural lighting and daylighting in the classroom environments?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, yeah. So that is our current plan is, is trying to maximize that. But at the same time, really realizing it is an educational instructional space. And, uh, you do need wall space, um, to, uh, to teach from. And so, uh, one of the things that we're also trying to do is utilize every wall in the classroom as a learning wall. Um, and so what it does is it gives the teachers all the tools that they need to be successful uh, down the road, no matter what the learning methodology is or the teaching or instructional method is, it gives them a lot of flexibility in the long term.
Um, I've got a question for you, um, in regards to safety, but this is more actually in regards to security type safety on the new design. Um, I'm interested to know details on what kind of improvement we'll see at Tim View as far as entrances and exits, the number of those, lines of sight. Uh, those kinds of things that have been concerns for us in the past.
Yeah. Mike, you want to take that one on or you want me to?
Let's both, I can start and maybe you can act him after. Uh, so, so our new plan will have a new main entrance, which will have a new secure vestibule, which will be very helpful. We're also doing, uh, door hardware improvements throughout the rest of the existing portions that are staying. Where we will have a, a better opportunity to lock down the school, um, on a regular basis. The, the new secure vestibule will limit all new, uh, visitors and things that go through that vestibule first. And they'll be locked in that space before they can get into the school and they have to be approved to go in. So that's, that's one feature. Brian?
Yeah. Well, maybe to add on to this is, is one of the biggest key factors with safety is just minimizing the access points into the building. Um, that's pretty tough in a high school, as you guys know. But we wanted to go to the greatest extent that we can, try and create a couple of main entry points if, if possible, and then control those points where we can. Um, so as Mike mentioned, we're trying to pull all the kids through from that student parking area and the bus parking area directly into the student commons itself. Um, and so what we're doing is, is we've got the secure vestibule, especially on the main entry side. And, and that's similar to, uh, what you have currently at Provo High School. Um, I believe as we did the security assessment there at Tim View High School, we identified there was, uh, gosh, it was like 70 entrance points or something. There was, there was a lot of entry points into that building. And so we're trying to mitigate that and drop that down to as minimal entry points as we can, just to control that access.
And then one more question for you on the timeline, um, that we saw. Um, I'm interested in the, um, the amount of time that we're going to have parking issues at Tim View. Is it, is it going to be that two-year span that we'll be working on? The academic wing that will have limited parking spaces available?
Yeah, that's correct. That, where that new, new, uh, classroom ring is built, being built right on the student parking right now. It's about two years where you'd have a limit on parking.
To piggyback on her question about parking, with the new parking lot, will we have more parking than we currently have?
Yeah, the new, the new parking lots of the southwest will have more stalls than what you have in that northeast parking lot. And it will also be on a, on a better slope. So you're not having cars slide in the ice and hitting each other just by parking there, right? So it'll be a much, uh, more comfortable parking lot.
Um, quick question about the south gym. Mark mentioned that you ran into some soil issues when, during construction. Is there anything you guys could add to that about what you saw while you were building?
So, so the nice thing was is that we, we had planned to do the peers. Uh, when we got into it, we were, uh, able to determine quickly what we needed to do, but it just took a little bit of the team to get involved and see where we needed to go. Uh, nothing that was of a concern, just, uh, just a little change in direction.
Um, what disruption, if any, will there be as you're finishing up the new portions and connecting them to the existing parts of the building?
Yeah, great question. Uh, there are, this, this new construction will, uh, span in between existing portions of your campus and kids will be expected to, uh, continue to learn, um, during construction. And so we go to great efforts with Westland Construction to develop a circulation plan for the students and also a safety plan. And, uh, you know, fencing plan to represent, uh, access and things to limit access from students into the construction zone. But the idea is that there will be clear paths for the students, safe paths where they can get from one point of the building to the other.
When your timeline indicated June, uh, 2021 to begin the new academic wing, does that include site work or will site work begin in advance of that?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, this, this timeline was, uh, summarized really. But the idea is that the site work, the excavation for that new classroom ring would actually start in April. So as soon as the south gym is done, Westland Construction would just roll up to the north and begin the, the excavation part for that new classroom. Good question.
Are there any other questions for V C B O? Okay. Thank you for your time this evening. Thanks for being with us.
Yeah, everybody nice. Great to chat with you again.
Yes? Thank you. Any additional questions for Mark? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening. Appreciate the update on this project.
You're welcome, guys. Thank you.
Stephanie, would you like to address the next item on our policy review?
Um, can you hear me? I hate my mic. So we have one policy adjustment and let me get to it. This is our 6607, which is our inclement, inclement weather policy. And we've made, um, I call it a minor adjustment, minor in writing probably, but a little bit more significant in operation. Um, we've included the option for on a snow day, rather than canceling school, we could, now that we've been kind of forced into homeschooling with COVID, we could call an at-home learning day. In the, in the case that the snow is bad enough that we feel like kids shouldn't be making it to school. So the adjustments in 6607 reflect that. Anywhere where we've said we had the option to cancel school due to whether we've added cancel school or call it at-home learning day. Um, and then it's just in the effort to not have to make up a snow day later. If we can call it and have kids and teachers work from home and still get their schooling in without impacting it, we feel like that'd be a bonus for us. And, you know, we had to experience it last March. We did in two days, so we think we can manage it that way.
Okay. Are there any questions for Stephanie regarding that change to our current policy? That seemed to be pretty straightforward.
It would, it would obviously still be the superintendent's call. We would still have our protocols in place the night before as far as the phone tree that we have internally between myself and superintendent, transportation, PR, um, facilities. So all of that still, all that phone calling and communication would still occur the night before. If we knew it was going to be bad enough, the superintendent could actually call the storm the night before if he wanted to and say, let's do a home, a home day. Um, but that's about the major, biggest changes, just giving us that opportunity to take advantage of home learning.
Thank you for your work on this. This seems to give us a great option where we don't really end up losing any instructional time because of weather now. One of the few blessings of COVID. All right. We will have during our, uh, business meeting, this will be an item that we will bring up for approval. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yes, it is.
Doug, would you, uh, share with us the information regarding open enrollment?
Jim, I have a quick question about the policies. Are we also approving?
Was there another policy on there?
Yeah, there was, um, 50, 50 and 5030 P1.
Okay, it looks like Jason, yeah, there's a licensure descriptions and then, uh, job study procedure. Thank you, Jennifer.
So those actually are, are procedures. So we wanted to make you aware of them. They, uh, we didn't, uh, need approval, but we wanted to make sure that you are aware that we were adjusting those to meet the new state requirements with licensure.
Is there anything new that we need to be aware of that is significant?
Uh, where it does change, uh, it, where it got rid of all of the different types of licenses that had been available in the past, like A R L. Uh, now that, that section is LEA specific. So there's that, that late license change has been added to take place of all those other types of licenses.
Does that make your job easier?
Yes, absolutely.
It seems then it's streamlined things and simplified the process.
It really does. It really streamlines things for, uh, for teachers in particular. Jason, could you explain how that works?
Yeah, uh, so now the expectation is that teachers need to go through their program and come out. And when they do come out, they come out as a professional level educator rather than being in a provisional status. Uh, so that's helpful to those who go through those programs. If someone comes as having, uh, a degree in a different field, but not having a teaching license, that's where the LEA specific license comes into play, where we ask you to grant them the license while they begin working with the state and working with a local university program to get in and to get that process of, of coming out with a professional level license. Uh, we also work locally with the universities to be able to support some of the people here in-house to go through that same process with us. Uh, but again, we, we have them first receive an LEA specific license. So bringing it all into one licensed area rather than the many that existed before has been quite helpful.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that update. This last week, I visited with a young man who was in the A R L. And he expressed a little frustration. And he went to another district that was a little more friendly, he said. But I think it was just a matter of, he did, didn't have any education background, so. Thank you. Any questions for, any additional questions for Jason from anyone? Okay, thank you. Doug, fly it now.
Good evening. Um, I, my task tonight is to get you up to speed on an annual uh, procedure that we follow in student services and that has to do with open enrollment. Open enrollment begins what they call an early registration window on December 1st of each year. And so our student services department has an obligation to do a capacity report to see what should any of our schools might possibly be closed for open enrollment. Again, in a quick nutshell, open enrollment is a essential estate statute that says that individuals can enroll in, in, in a school that's not in their particularly prescribed attendance area if that school has space by some certain formulas in place. So we, uh, review this as does other school districts. And we are going to publish this year a report that shows where our capacity reports are per school. I think this information was provided for you in your, in your documents and there's a ton of data there if you're into that sort of a thing. Um, but essentially what I'm going to try and advocate for tonight is that, um, our enrollment has been a particular area of interest to us as it's related to COVID. I think statewide, you've seen reports about the concerns about where maybe all the students are, particularly at the elementary levels. We also have felt an impact in our schools somewhat. As well as as a district, you're well aware that we also reconfigured and reformed what we were doing with E-school. And so there was a significant amount of decrease in our overall district numbers based on that decision last year. But as you can see on, if you pulled up the, the table, you can see that our teaching spaces are identified per school. We also identify those that are used for, um, special teaching stations or support classrooms that we remove them off the number. And then we identify a maximum capacity. Open enrollment works within a 90% of capacity window. So it gives you that space to deal with people that might be coming and going into your neighborhood. So you haven't necessarily locked them out, in other words, because they've just moved into your neighborhood. So there's a buffer built into that. So you can see what those adjusted open enrollment numbers are. We use that for our December 1 decision to decide whether we want to open schools, um, keep them open for open enrollment application or close them. Um, you can see then later in the year, just by way of information, in the springtime, we work closely with our human resources department because the new threshold's not necessarily dependent on how many classrooms we have available. It then becomes dependent on how many teachers we have assigned to each school. So there's two different windows. There's a December 1 window and then there's a, another window that opens after the 3rd Friday in February. And that, uh, becomes the late enrollment period for open enrollment status. In summary, we're just, um, projecting, you know, I'm sure of on your sheet that it's kind of a, a more of a navy color there. You can see the October 1 count in column J compared to column K where it has our projected enrollments for next year. We hope to be somewhat, you know, straight across school by school with our enrollment. We do see and anticipate an enrollment increase at one of our comprehensive high schools, Tim View High School. So we in particular, we're concerned about whether we had capacity there. You can see that while you look at column L, it states that there is capacity, um, still at Tim View High School. It does fall within that threshold. And so there will be some cautiousness made to watching the Tim View enrollment numbers. But as we've visited as council and so forth, we felt like particularly in this time of wanting to make sure that we have good enrollment numbers, we are proposing that we keep our schools all open. And I've worked with each of the building principals, particularly want to thank, uh, the two supervisors, Todd and Alex, who've facilitated conversations with me and with their principals to make sure that they were comfortable with remaining in an open enrollment status for next year. So you can kind of see where the, kind of tight spots are. You can see where the opening spots are district wide by billing. Felt like this would be very helpful information for review as the superintendent and I considered. Where we at in, in making this decision in open enrollment, we felt like this would be helpful for you. And we'll continue these conversations around enrollment and some of the changes that are imminent to us because of changes next spring when it comes to that time of determining our projections for next year more, more solidly. So I'll pause there and just again, in summary, say we are proposing that all our schools for December 1st will, will be open for open enrollment this year. Any questions?
Board, any questions for Doug?
Uh, yeah, I'm curious, especially since we're talking about Tim View being close to the threshold. Um, for them specifically, it's hard to tell from this chart. How have the numbers been this year as far as number of students who wanted to enroll this year? Who, do we have more students wanting to come to Tim View than we have in past years? Has it been about the same? And have we had more students opt out of Tim View this year than we normally do?
Thanks, Jennifer. The last three columns on that table identify the patterns from this last year as far as the open enrollment requests, those that came in and those that left. And so you can see, and we looked at previous year's numbers, you're not seeing the historical documents. But we reviewed those, those are similar. The numbers 52, 47 and 15. Now 15 again is a number of those that have left the school. We don't know necessarily where everyone goes because we can't track where it is that they re-enrolled unless it was within our district. So that 15, for instance, would represent those who left the school and attended one of our other high school programs, right? But you can see that those others are right in line with what we've seen in previous years. So when we say there's near capacity there, the school felt like that their pattern has not been to receive more open enrollment requests than it is that they have the space for. Also, as of course we spent the last 45 minutes on, we know that the school is undergoing a transition for space and so forth. And that capacity will change over time. These numbers, thanks to Mark's department, do reflect including the four classroom units that we just added to the campus as being spaces to teach in. And the school is committed to work with Mark's department. If there's a, any significant change here, to consider other ways we might create, um, space. I mean, this is, again, doesn't utilize some of the things you can do creatively as a high school principal around scheduling, uh, two PE classes in the same gymnasium, um, utilizing a stage area in an auditorium for certain classes. So in other words, there is some outside of the box thinking that can also help the school. They just have a strong desire to really meet the mission of the school district to continue to have as, as, as healthy of an enrollment as possible. Because with that enrollment comes the funding, of course, to support it. Could I ask you a question, Jennifer?
I just have a question about Dixon and Centennial on the chart. They said both, those schools didn't receive any transfers or?
Yeah, good point, Melanie. This is an example of last year at this time, we determined with, with council and the superintendent that those two schools were at capacity last year. So the reason there aren't any applications last year is those two schools were closed for open enrollment last year. So that's an example of, of when we would apply this rule. We determined a year ago at this time that both of those projected enrollments were at or above capacity. And so we had, uh, essentially closed down the ability for students to apply for open enrollment to the two middle schools last year. You can see the adjustments with the move up numbers. So those that are in the eighth grade moving up to ninth grade or those in the sixth grade feeder programs moving up to seventh grade, that we feel like we've got that space again, that little, um, bubble of sorts is moving its way through. So therefore something like 10- So therefore, something like Tempe seeing larger numbers is evidence that that bubble is moving up through to now the high schools. But the numbers for both those middle schools are now in a safe zone where we feel like we'll open them again for open enrollment.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Doug?
Well, does this mean we're going to see numbers fall in at Tempe in in three or four years as that bubble moves through the population? I know this is kind of besides the point, but.
No, that's a great question, Nate. I think if if we could always control all the predictive elements of saying all of our kids are in the pipeline. So if we were looking at students we know in our classrooms, in our seats coming through, I think this enrollment bump represents some of the immersion programs that are finally getting to their last years of fruition, you know, where we brought in in some of the dual-language immersion schools, a lot more kids. This is that group that's moving through now to high school than all of those three programs that feed into the high schools. So I think that it is hard to predict things such as what goes on in the economy. We've seen that drastically change numbers. So a year ago, for instance, we wouldn't have anticipated that we'd have closed Centennial and Dixon. But when it came to about the time of registration, we noted that there was a lot of people who were living with other people in the household, people that were turning their basements into duplexes. Lots of those sorts of things are happening economically and otherwise based that we couldn't have projected. So there are some unpredictable things around mobility. But as far as, yeah, would we anticipate if all these things held true and the pattern of every kid in our program stayed with us, there might be a little bit of a leveling off of those numbers, particularly at Tempe High School in the next three to four years.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, McKay.
Do you know if our trend, so a few years ago Buddy Richards did some study with BYU, and he showed that about a third of our high school graduates never attended any of our elementary schools, that they came in. And so that might present a problem in projecting our secondary enrollment as well because they're, we get them late for some reason. But I probably don't know if if we've continued to see that trend, or maybe we could see if that happens.
Right, I think for that reason, that that the question that Nate asked is is a difficult one to answer because there are some unpredictable factors that go into that. We also have a number of charter schools we know in the area that probably draw down our kids for the K-6, sometimes into middle school level. I'm seeing a few nods of heads. You know that there's a lot of programs there that seem appealing. But once the students become secondary level, we find them wanting to return to our comprehensive schools where they can have all of the extracurricular programs and things associated with our school district. So there are some factors that come into play with that. And just even with the addition of Treecide and a few others that have opened over the last couple of years, that will continue to add some elements of unpredictability. Gratefully, and HR are the experts at this because they base funding and mechanisms for FTE allocation on it. There are patterns we find over time, and we use those as predictors along with the hard numbers.
Great. Just another thing, I know that that Scott Jones at the at USBE is, with today, with this year sort of moving around, there has been a little more interest in where do kids go? And he might have better ways of finding that. We might, that might be something we could ask.
Yeah, we certainly are interested. Stephanie was helpful in helping us run some initial reports, but even as we looked at those, there was a population we still weren't quite sure where they went to because they didn't re-register their SSID number at some other sort of state agency. So it made you wonder, where did they go? And so, yeah, I think everyone's asking this question because our desire is to engage and invite people back to stay connected with our school district. That's really important to us. So thanks, McKay, for that advice. Nate?
This is probably beyond the scope, but and this goes to what McKay's saying. Are we going to get those numbers where the other districts pay us if they, if, like if our students, students from Provo move to Orem, then then we pay them, right? At the, at some point in the year, we get those numbers. Isn't that how that works?
Are you talking about the October 1st count date?
Yeah, did we do that already? Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of, yeah, that interagency that takes place, particularly when someone will split their enrollment between us and another agency. That's probably when we find ourselves splitting bills and sharing so forth. But it's kind of an oftentimes, the the rule in general is whoever has them October 1 gets the funding for that school year. Does that sound accurate, Stephanie?
Yeah, so that data goes into a system called UTRACs up at the state, and the state uses. They don't use strictly October 1 for our funding. They call it, they use what's called average daily membership. But they use October 1 as part of the growth factor for that. So you want the October number one, October 1 counts to be good for your growth factor. And then they take your daily memberships throughout the year for the rest of the WPU calculation. And then if somebody has our student, they'll get that WPU if we have their student. If they're sharing, they give us a proration of it.
Yeah. So the information that you had in your, some 18 columns or so, know that about eight to 10 columns will be published on the student services website. They'll have this information as well as the updates, Nate, to your question. We'll have the October 1 count in here, but we'll also have the January 2nd and the April 1 counts. They will update this throughout the year. They'll just be an adequate representation for all of you, as well as the community to see we're out with enrollment and just kind of the reasons why we have schools that are open or closed at any time. So I said, this isn't a matter that needs to be voted on. We just felt like it'd be a good discussion because I think discussions around enrollment are going to be lively ones for us as we try to identify, you know, who we're serving and how we can make sure we continue to serve them well this upcoming year. Thank you.
One one more quick question. So we made the paper that, you know, we had, you know, a paper reported we had 3,000 fewer students. Was that number because there was projected students that didn't show up? And then students that we have, where did that 3,000 number in the paper come from?
Yeah, that would be interesting for me to to respond to that, McKay. I would feel like one of the decisions that we're all aware of, that we we said, we watched about 2,200 students leave with our model of the e-school program where we were with My Tech High and Harmony. We were counting those as our enrollments, but we made the decision last spring, and you folks were involved in saying, we knew that that population was going to walk. So off the top of the 3,000, 2,200 kids, we just knew they were going to go somewhere else with their third-party approach that they were taking to our online learning.
And I think Scott Jones is aware of that, that we expected a drop because of the e-school change. So Scott knows that.
Sure.
Our actual drop right now is about 650.
Yeah, so we're about between 600 and 800 people, perhaps below.
I know that there's just been some discrepancy between districts. Some some districts reported they were estimating this, and then those kids, you know, then those kids didn't show up, and then, you know, new kindergartners didn't come up. But they only reported sort of the number that they went down. And and so I just wondered about that number.
Yeah, and you see it on those, if you are plugging into the participation reports that I'm sending and forwarding, and sometimes you'll get copies, you'll see at the bottom there, it tracks our enrollment week to week, and and you can kind of count those numbers. And there has been some movement as we've started year, and we've had cleanup records and individuals that show up. So this idea of 600 to 800 students, primary and elementary schools in the K-6, is where enrollment has changed over what we projected and anticipated this year. So anyway, I'm sure there'll be more discussions to have at another time. So thanks so much for the lively conversation.
Thank you very much, Doug. We appreciate that update, and thank you for the great work you're doing in helping us keep our finger on the pulse of enrollments throughout the district. Stephanie, our large purchase?
Okay, as you as you are aware, purchases that were not already in the approved budget that exceed 50,000 need to come to the board for approval. CTE has the budget for this purchase, but they had not outlined specifically what the purchase would be at the time of the budgets being approved. So they are requesting a purchase for about $75,000 to update their graphic computer systems. They said it's time for them to rotate and cycle in a new system, so. And I think I had invited Clay, but I'm guessing this was a couple of weeks ago. Oh, he is here. I think he's on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, would you share with us this large purchase request?
Yeah, so essentially, this is replacing a a Mac computer lab in Provo High School. So I have a lot of support from the tech department that helps me out, saying, this is about the end of the lifespan of these computers, and we need to replace them. They're in Mark Edwards's classroom. And so he teaches screen printing, graphic design, graphic arts. And that's why this purchase is a little more expensive because of the programs that he has to run. And so we have to go with a little bit more expensive computer to do this.
Questions from the board?
So my only question is, what is the expected lifespan of these computers?
It's about six years, and so we're on, this is the fifth year, so it'd be starting the sixth year next year. I do have about four labs I have to replace next year. And this is all funded through the federal grant of Carl Perkins. And this is, you know, one-time money that we have to spend each year, and it's allocated towards, earmarked towards, equipment for us to purchase, so.
Do you apply every year for the Carl Perkins money?
Yeah, we're currently on the first year of the two-year grant. So so we have money this year and next year.
The money's then, will you have enough money next year to cover the purchases for the four other labs?
Yeah, it'll be close. We'll probably have to spread it out a little bit and extend some of those computer labs longer than I would want to. But we will make it happen.
Can the outgoing machines in this lab be repurposed elsewhere, or are they end of life?
They're pretty close to end of life according to, you know, this is not my expertise, but according to our tech department. They they can be surplus, which will go back into the help on the cost of this a little bit, if possible, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Board, this will be an item that will be in action. Thank you for those explanations. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
We are to item H. I know this is everyone's favorite topic to discuss now. And I know, Melanie, it's really your fun, fun topic. We will have our COVID update. Keith, you have.
So I'll start this off. As the board knows, every day, 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock, we have a safety committee meeting where we review all of the latest COVID data. Our internal data is our own cases. Those who are tested positive, those are reported to us that have tested positive elsewhere and have come to us through the health department and other agencies. And also, we have, we have all of our nurses who are actively collecting information, gathering all kinds of data on, again, cases, both quarantined and positive cases, tested cases. And so we have seen, just like we've seen out in the community, we've seen our numbers on a gradual incline here on a daily basis. We, I will tell you that one strange anomaly that does seem to occur on a weekly basis is that Monday and Tuesday, the numbers seem to be lower than they were on the previous Thursday and Friday. Whether that's just time away or something is happening, we haven't really analyzed it much, but you can see that trend virtually on a weekly basis. Melanie is one of the approximately 20 or 25 people across the district who zoom in on these calls. We have two nurse representatives, Suzanne Livingston from the health department and everybody on council, as well as custodial representatives. Who am I missing? Food services, child nutrition, transportation, on and on and on. We, and we also have two members of our of our employee groups, Bailey Danielson, who, as you know, is the president of PEA, and Kirk Albach, who is the president of PESP this year. They both attend to bring forward issues that they have concerns about. It was a good move to bring them on, and they've contributed extremely well. I think maybe what I'll do before we get on to other things is just let me say one more thing, and then I will ask Melanie to give a report from her perspective, board member to board members, about what she's seeing and the things that we're experiencing on the safety committee as we're talking about COVID issues. I just want to remind everybody that as the year started, I set forth three goals for the district that I shared with the entire district. The first one was safety in this environment. That would seem to have been the right move, even though it's not always the first thing that we think about when we come, when we think about schools. The second item is, of course, high-quality education and engagement. And then the third one is inclusion and more general acceptance of one another as we work here in our district. Those three are being played out on a day-to-day basis. We're working on them, although the safety committee and the amount of time that we put in there, of course, that is really meeting our number-one objective, which is we must keep our students and our staff and our patrons safe. So with that said, Melanie, why don't you share some thoughts that you have, and then I will invite others. We've left this fairly open-ended. We've also, by the way, on the business meeting, put a placeholder item in there for you to act on if you were to choose to based on the conversation. But actually, we're not anticipating that there will necessarily be any formal action tonight. We're just putting that there as a placeholder, as you know, because if we don't have it on the agenda 24 hours in advance, it can't take place on the, in the meeting. So Melanie, all yours.
Okay, this is a very small sample of all the things we've talked about, but I'm just going to be highlighting a few of them. UHSSA is going to be testing to play, especially with Tempe being in the state finals this Friday. They had to do it, they'll have to test 48 hours. Is that correct, Todd? They test tomorrow to make sure that they're negative. And then they're going to be working also on how this will work with winter sports. They haven't really finalized that all out, but that will be coming from UHSSA. As you guys know, right now with the governor, it's all kind of, it's all stopped until, I guess, until further notice, or is it just these two weeks? As superintendent said, we worked with PEA representative Bailey Danielson. And she's also mentioned that the teachers, most of the teachers are feeling well-supported and are grateful for the work that has been placed in front of them to be able to work during this time. So they're grateful. Student Services has been looking at participation rates, especially among our home study participants. They're going to be making sure that the high schools will be making, marking these more. They were kind of low this last time around as far as marking. And these markings are from a P-0 up to a P-4. And it's, they're really helpful, especially right now, to make sure that they're in the right place. Should they be in home studies? Should they be in e-school? Should they be going to school? Let's see. School nurses are working tirelessly to follow up on all positives and contact tracing. This has been a huge job for them, and it's never-ending. In fact, one of the nurses today said, today, everything's COVID. So that's all, that's her life right now. Social workers are seeing an increase in referrals. Technology, Chromebooks are working well. They're they're starting to see some come in, but for the most part, the Chromebooks are working well. They're still receiving calls for support, but it's much more manageable. Some Google chats have been removed from some buildings due to misuse. The cameras that we approved at our last meeting are here, and they're working with building principals to decide where these cameras will be installed. As you are aware, the state COVID manual for schools was updated on November 12. And on page 25, it says, "In most cases, schools do not need to close for in-person learning. Schools may consider hybrid or remote learning options to protect students, teachers, and employees." "Local education agencies should work closely with the local elected school board and the health department before making these decisions to temporarily transition to hybrid or remote learning options." So when a school hits 15 positives in a 14-day window, that's the key words there, 15 positives in that 14-day window, it triggers the conversation between the school district and the county health department. I want to assure you that the move from Phase 2 to Phase 1 for both high schools were done in cooperation with the Utah County Health Department and the members of our safety committee. The move to Phase 1 was an acceptable solution. There is one school that the entire administration team is out due to COVID-related things. They're currently using other administrators from other schools to cover them. But there could be a point where subs may not be available, and the school may have to go online. We're watching the numbers closely at the high schools and middle schools. The numbers are continuing to rise. We will need to continue to watch them. But the question that I want to propose to you guys tonight is, at what point do we say we may need to go online? It's just an option. It's something that I want to throw out at you. The other thing that I want to throw out to talk about a little is, if we keep seeing this rise up and through next Monday, Tuesday, do we want to consider maybe staying in phase one for our high schools through Christmas break for the next three weeks after, after Thanksgiving? This is just something I want to throw out to you. So.
Um, I've got a question. I wonder if anyone knows. I know that there have been some, um, neighboring school districts who have chosen to go all online recently for certain schools. Do we know what their, um, metrics were that they used to determine that for their schools?
All I know is that every, it's from that, what I read from the COVID manual is once they hit fifteen, that's what triggers the conversation. And it's up to their local board and conversations with their county health department to decide what the next step should be.
I did hear on the news that, I believe it was Jordan, that closed a lot last week, that many of them were also, um, they had a lot of students that were just absent. Not necessarily COVID cases or quarantine cases, but just they weren't attending. And so that was one of their factors.
And haven't some of them switched to the one percent metric?
I believe Alpine. There's, there's some of them have, have switched to a one percent. Um, I think Canyons and, and Alpine. Um, however, the state COVID manual has not, um, accepted that as a, as a, a way to do it. And so the Utah County Health Department is not acknowledging the one percent as of yet. I mean, the things can change regularly, so.
Yeah, the, so they're, they're, just like us. We're looking for a metric where this is sort of, well, what do you do? Uh, and when do you do it? And how do you decide? And they're trying to look for a place to decide, um, and, um, and, and there's, you know, huge debate. Um, people don't understand the fifteen for the most part, and it's not an easy thing to describe. I, I think that for us, our decision for online would be, um, our staffing capacity. Um, and if we are getting, um, positive cases in those, we quarantine. So when we get, so certainly when we're at fifteen, um, that, that's, so there's been some discussion about how you count to fifteen and if you are in school, you're not in school, or, or which type of your students. Um, I think the reason that I was interested in that is because we're in phase one. How do we count to fifteen? People have, might, they can miss, you know, one or two days of school and not have been in school in a week. Do you still count them? Uh, if we, if our overall number is north of fifteen and that trend is, is high, I think we, we, we want to stay. Does that make sense? But at the same time, I think, uh, the default should be going to school. We've seen the disruption, um, and so there has to be, in other words, there has to be a, a reason for me not to be in school rather than, let's just, uh, watch, uh, over the, over the next while. Um, or let's do this as a preventative. Um, uh, we've seen, you know, tremendous disruption and, and we, and, uh, you know, I, I've been impressed with some of Nate's numbers that, you know, our, our kids have been in school some of the least, and we've had more infections, um, as, as a, as a community. So there's something about, uh, the structure and, and it's very difficult and it's a sacrifice. We, and so we need to continue to work with our faculty and continue to make sure that, that they, uh, understand the protocols and, and, and know that, yeah, a lot of our kids can't social distance, but they should make the effort. That they should social distance, that age difference. And, um, and then I think we have to, we have to watch, and it's likely that those numbers will continue to stay high. But I think we should always have a default of going back.
Have, have we seen, I know we moved to a, a schedule where you could get back into school early by testing after ten days.
It's, it's actually after seven days, but they have to be, they have to be part of the school. Like it had to have been diagnosed, like, like they had to have been quarantined at the, part of the school.
Okay.
So they can't be from an outside source.
Okay, so that's, that exposed at school.
Yes.
I mean, that should give us really good data if people are taking those tests on whether or not we're seeing infections in schools. Do we know if people are taking the test to get back early? I mean, that...
I, I haven't heard, do, we, we haven't heard, because we aren't doing the rapid testing or anything on those kids. Um, Jason?
I could just say too, anecdotally, we do know some people are taking the test after the seven days. Uh, and we've had both employees and students return because of that, but we haven't been tracking it. Uh, the nurses keep a track, uh, in their, uh, fields of who is eligible to go and test. But they then would receive the report of the retest after that. And we haven't been asking them for the number of, of how many have retested. We do know when employees contact us and say, "We've gotten a positive results. We've worked with the nurse. We're ready to come back." But again, I couldn't give you an exact number on that.
If, if it's at all possible, I think that would be a wonderful metric to have because it would tell us, A, if a school, if the virus is being trans, I know we believe that it's not because we're not seeing any real indication that there's in-class transmissions. But if we had those actual numbers, we could say, hey, look, uh, forty percent of our people tested. They all tested, uh, negative because really those numbers, those people are within six feet. They're not socially distanced at all. And it, I, I can't believe a better study for whether masks work or not, uh, than that. I, I don't know why schools aren't doing it like crazy because it's such an important piece of research. Uh, I, I, I just want to, I want to know if the infections are happening in class. And right now, there's no indication that they are. And if they're not, I don't really see the point of canceling school so the kids spend more time with their friends playing Xbox and making out and doing whatever.
And getting COVID.
Yeah, and getting COVID.
I do.
Doing that stuff and getting COVID.
And I, I think you make a good point that we can't really look at, see if a kid gets positive from a quarantine. We can't guarantee that he received, he or she received it from the school. But if you can see the quarantine negatives, that's a difference.
We, I mean, you would expect if someone, if there's a problem inside of a school and people aren't socially distant and they're sitting next to someone who is infectious, that they would get it at a rate higher than community spread. I think right now, what, two percent of population is coming up positive? So you could eliminate two percent of the things, but if we saw thirty percent of kids and, and, I mean, I'm looking at, uh, Wasatch. I mean, the Wasatch numbers are high. They're kind of scary. Are, are kids getting, uh, that inside Wasatch or Dixon or Centennial? And if those numbers were high, we would know, especially if it's in a particular class or maybe there isn't good airflow. Uh, it, it's just such, such important data that would be helpful to have and would give us clear answers.
So Doug, can you tomorrow raise this with the, uh, health department, the nurses, so we can gather the...
I think this is one response to the reason why the numbers go. It's not a kind of motivation to go get that second test now because the rapid tests aren't readily available. Someone's got to go get in the line and then they get that result three to four, or in some cases, longer. And they were trying to come back to school earlier than the fourteen days, ends up coming.
Okay.
Eleven.
When rapid testing gets in place, there's a good chance that the thing that you're asking for, Nate, might be more available, readily available for a quick response as to whether someone actually tested positive when a contamination happened at school, I assume. But yeah, Keith, I'll make sure we close this tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of other things I'd like to add if I can. One is that I received an email on Friday from Angie Stallings. Uh, for those who don't know, Angie Stallings is one of the deputy superintendents of the USBE, reminding us that if we do not have a waiver on file for the one-eighty-nine-ninety, um, policy, state requirement, that we need to have a policy in place, uh, allowing us to do, um, a variation on that. And I sent an email to her. She was away yesterday, and today I'm waiting to hear back from her. I remember that we have an approved waiver. But, um, in fact, I remember that Todd submitted that and I got word back from them that, that we were good on that. That was around the beginning, very beginning of August, if I remember correctly. But I've just, uh, sent an email to her to confirm that that is the case. Uh, just be prepared in the event that we have to develop a policy and bring it to you in December. We will do that. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, and, and this is, this is not exactly a secret, but everybody associated with public education at all, I believe, is very concerned about our students, how badly are students missing out on learning? How far behind will they be by the end of first semester? How far, how far behind will they be at the end of the school year? Uh, we started in council meeting yesterday afternoon, a discussion about what can we do, whether through any remaining CARES Act money, any new CARES Act money that could come down through the feds or through the state or other means, what kind of things can we do to put systems in place in our district to get kids caught up? This will come to an end one day where we will return to some degree of normalcy. And the, the concern that we have is we don't want to be caught without a plan. So I introduced the council yesterday and they are, they're, every member of council is actively pursuing potential solutions to this. We'll be involving others in this discussion as well. What ideas can we, uh, employ to try to get our system being more, uh, responsive to the lost learning that has gone on? And we probably have to reach all the way back into last March and April to, to really get a good picture of that. So just be aware that we are working on that. Those are, we haven't introduced that to the safety committee yet because honestly, that's for those of us who, um, get paid a little bit more to start to develop some plans and hopefully put together some systems that will work. We hope to have something in place that we can hopefully, um, implement in the summertime or at the very latest in the fall. Some kind of new approach to how we do business in our teaching and learning, especially with students who are behind. We must get after this. We can't just let ourselves and our students lag behind. In terms of the actual functioning of the safety committee and the other things that we're dealing with, I wanted to mention that, uh, this is the final thing I'll say, then I'll let the board have their conversation again. But I wanted to also say, we try to be very proactive in terms of looking ahead to, to allowing people to do, to make plans. So for example, Monday, November thirtieth, that day will be our first day back of school following five days of no school. We would like to be able to provide some assurances on Tuesday or Wednesday, just at the beginning of that, um, little break, to let people know what's going to happen on Monday. I would prefer not to have to call together a meeting over that long weekend and then fumble around with trying to get the word out and not do a very good job of communicating with people who are out of town and on and on and on. So we're hoping to be able to make some good, solid communications about what's going to go on November, Monday, November thirtieth. And then if there are changes that have to occur after that, we would be tracking the data, again, starting that morning like we do every day in the safety committee to determine if there are further needs for adjustments to programs throughout our district. Uh, that's all I have at the moment. Board.
Thank you. I think that goes back to your questions, Melanie, that you would ask now. Julie?
No, I, I just want to clarify something. Um, this is probably obvious to everybody else, but Ma- McKay made the comment, you know, we, we need to stay in school as much as we can, and I completely agree with that. Are you, are you talking about phase one? Is that specifically what you're talking about? Or you're not wanting to nail that down?
So, so, uh, so as, as, as much as possible, if there's a reason to stay, so, um, phase one would be as if, if our students are, you know, north of fifteen, e- even after a break and, and after a break, it's, you know, it's likely, we've seen infections go up, the, the rest of the, of the state isn't doing well. Our community isn't doing well. It seems like tons of people in my neighborhood suddenly have COVID. Um, and, uh, and so, um, but if it, if it's, if we're there, I can see staying in favor of one. If we're, uh, and then again, if we're running out of staff, um, uh, and, and we're, we're having, uh, trouble, uh, trouble in that way where we see, uh, you know, if, if our, if it's just reported from our principals that families are reporting that, you know, everybody feels like they got COVID from school. Uh, that's starting to happen right now a little bit. It's the first time in the last week I've, uh, where I've heard, you know, not asking. I've just heard conversations like, "Oh, your family has COVID? Where do you think you got it?" "Well, TIFU's a hotspot." And, you know, you know, "Little Johnny has been at TIFU." And, and so they're starting to say those things, and I don't know that. And so, um, uh, but a- again, I, I think that, uh, um, that the safety committee has, should have full authority to, to make these things based on our numbers, our staffing numbers, our, our fifteen. Um, if, and if, you know, we're below fifteen, we should be in phase, phase two. We should have the four days.
Todd, can I ask you a question? You, I, I'm sure some of the others would be interested. My question is, you just saw us go directly from phase two to phase one with no, no time in between. I guess Provo High got the weekend, but TIFU did not. How did the, how did that go?
The transition back to phase one?
Yeah.
Um, I, I believe our, our model has made it relatively, um, easier for teachers and, and for students to make that transition. We were in phase one for so long that that routine was, was known. And so it, it seems like it was, it was pulled off without any real concerns. You know, I, I, I think, um, a couple of things for the board to, to consider. Um, back to Nate's original question, I, I think we have some indication of an answer to that from the health department. I think the state has made it pretty clear, and, and I would agree, um, that we're seeing relatively little impact in, during the school day because of all the mitigation strategies that we've been, have in place. The mask, the distancing, the disinfecting. Uh, we closed three schools Friday for a deep disinfecting because we saw the numbers getting up. Those things I think are working. Uh, we're, we're really seeing issues and concerns with our students, however. Um, and the state again is, I think, said, uh, said this from their experience across the state, our after-school activities. That where kids are, are really getting exposed, potentially contracting the disease and passing along are with clubs, athletics, those social activities, particularly in the secondary schools. And I think that's why you saw the governor take such a strong stance in his last declaration about keeping the schools open, but after-school programs are suspended until November thirtieth. So I think that's, that gives us some indication of, of how we can proceed. What I, I would prompt the board to think, though, a little bit more about, um, whether or not we would go fully online and, and what that might look like and why we would do that. You know, I, I would, I would suggest that if it was simply around student count and student exposures, we, we probably can manage it very well. Our experience up to this point has shown that we can manage it well in phase one. Where we may need to consider going fully online is what we're seeing now with many of our staff. We have one school in particular that's been hit pretty heavily by this, at the staff level. And they're getting to a point where, um, it's really difficult for them to even find subs. They're having to double up classes. They're pulling in trackers, doing lots of creative things to try to just simply have an adult in the room with students during that time. It may get to a point where our buildings no longer can provide, um, quality instruction because so many staff members are being impacted. We've had two, um, administrative teams at two different buildings that have gone down. And we've been fortunate enough that we've had, um, the ability to pull administrators from other buildings to cover for them while those entire administrative teams have been down. Um, but we may get to a point where we don't have that luxury. Even today, working with Syrah, we had an entire special ed team that is out. And that's, that's not something that, that's an area that's not easy to replace. You can't just simply find a sub for some of these highly impacted classrooms. Takes a specialized skill set to work with those kinds of students. And we're fortunate that we have outside providers that are going to come in and help us, be able to maintain and provide, uh, some quality experience for students while these entire teams hit. But there may come a breaking point that we might want to consider as, as a district.
And board, I'd like to remind you that we've been talking about this for about two months. I've mentioned this in previous board meetings. Um, Jason Garrison, who leads the safety committee meeting, um, Jason and his team have been collecting, um, data not just on our schools, but also on transportation, child nutrition, technology workers, custodians, on and on and on. But just because these are people who are essential to our overall operations. And again, if we do not have teachers, if we do not have staff that can keep our buildings open, then that's going to tie our hands in the kinds of directions and decisions that have to come forward. But, but, um, we do coordinate all of this with the health department several times a week. Uh, we're very confident with their guidance that we're, we're, we're going to be able to... to manage this. But I agree with Todd and McKay mentioned earlier, I think the big factor on this one will be staff. If we start to run into a point where staff can work, but they're on quarantine, enough of those, we cannot run school. That's simply how it's going to look.
So one question here, as we evaluate staffing situations, so it seemed to me when we began the school year, we, we wanted to sort of treat all the district the same. And if, if somebody didn't have, you know, a four-day school or hybrid school, it wasn't fair for somebody else to be. To me, we're in an emergency situation and anything we can do for anybody is a bonus for somebody. I mean, we should look at, certainly want to treat everybody the same, but are you suggesting that we need to manage this again at a district level, that we just say, the district goes all online? Or is it still manageable to go, you know what, we don't have the staff at this school, this school needs to close for two weeks?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. You know, and, and we've talked a lot about trade-offs and costs. And we recognize the more students, the more time students are out of class, the greater the cost. We also are finding that the more transitions kids go through, more transitioned schools go through, there's a cost to that. And there comes a point where that may become as disruptive as the student not being in the class overall. You know, I think we're in this, in this time currently McKay, where we're managing it site by site. And I, I think that's an appropriate way to, to approach it. I think we can handle it site by site, school by school. Each situation's a little bit different, even though we're seeing numbers escalate across the district.
I have a question related to what you're saying about time with learning. Has anyone at the council or in the safety committee started to discuss, at what point do we think about evaluating where we're at with our current schedule of the day? And are we ready to move to a fuller day schedule?
We're, we're looking at that. Again, there are trade-offs to doing so. And, you know, we're getting to a point where any additional schedule changes will have, will have a systems impact. It, it was almost impossible at this point to do it site by site or level by level in terms of change. It would almost have to be an entire district change because of busing.
Yeah, for schedule, definitely, yeah.
Understand there are also implications that come into this on, on the teacher's side in terms of home study and what we're able to provide for students that are at home. So again, we can push forward in any direction the board would like us to go, but there will be trade-offs that we just have to be cognizant of.
I would love it if by our next meeting, we could have some more information from secondary and from elementary, where they're at with home study, the demands that are on the teachers, how they're utilizing that extra time, and to see if and when they might be ready to, to go to a full day.
I, I can report tonight that with the phase change on November 9th, we've seen a pretty drastic increase in home study at the secondary level.
Which way?
Of increase.
Increase.
We've had more families choose home study, whether it's because of illness or because of concerns at home of contracting the illness. We've seen an increase in it and increasing demand for it.
Julie?
Yeah, just when Melanie was going through her list at the beginning of the conversation, there's a comment that, that we've seen an uptick in the, the social service demands. Are we managing that? Like, I, I, we, we've known from the very beginning, there was going to be issues and there's going to be struggles. And I think we're all anticipating and expecting that. Are we managing it? Better than as, you know?
We, we have a lot of things going for us. We, we, we're very, I think, fortunate as a district. One, we have an incredible staff overall. Our teachers are incredible and they're doing incredible work. We're also very fortunate that we have as many social workers as we have. And Doug probably could speak better to this than I. But, you know, I think one of the things they're trying to tease out with the social workers is this up, is asking this question, is the uptick that we're seeing because of COVID and greater demand, which is probably true? Or is it because we've all of a sudden with phase two, increased access to social workers, which also may be true? So there, there's, there's a couple of things that are playing into this. And again, we have an incredible group of social workers. I, in the five districts I've worked in throughout my career, I haven't seen a district so committed to serving the whole child as the Provo district. And so I think we're really fortunate in that regard.
Our team of social workers, but I don't even know the word I'm looking for. I, I know that there's a lot of people that this whole thing is just nailing harder than others. How are they doing? Just, just, just like personally, are they, are they functioning?
From what I could tell, from what?
Are they, are they burning out, I guess? And not, not to the point that they're going to say, we aren't doing this anymore, but are we supporting them while they're supporting? And I know it's hard. I know it's hard.
I think that's an excellent question for us to be asking. I think they're, we're all carrying the burden. Every one of us, we all feel the impact. And social workers, especially their frontline, they're dealing with some of the most difficult and challenging situations. Our teachers are, are frontline too, and they're, and they're seeing the same kinds of things. You know, there is a, you know, we talk about COVID fatigue and we certainly see some of that. We certainly see some of that.
Just, I, I was just going to say, Julie, from what we hear in our meetings, it sounded like, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the social workers, their loads were not really heavy in phase one. And as we moved to phase two, they saw the increase in elementary. And then as we've gone to phase two with the secondary, that's when they started seeing the increases.
So why is that? That's, that kind of, contrary to what I might, we might think.
It's probably a combination of things. I think the answer, the answer to the question is yes, we, we're seeing greater need in the community. We're also, we've also provided greater access too.
Yeah.
Because all kids are back in the school at, at the same time in phase two.
Some of the anecdotal reports that we've received, so for example, on phase one, there were students who were separated from one another, who may not have gotten along all that well in the past, and now they're all back together and there can be some conflict between them. That can be one of those things. I also want to just point out publicly that I know the board doesn't necessarily look forward to these conversations every couple of weeks. What you're feeling is on a scaled-down basis of what the teachers are looking at every day and with social workers and counselors and administrators and on. This group of people over here, not a single one of them has taken a normal vacation for months. And summer is usually a downtime. It wasn't this past year. And so the burden that all of you are feeling is similar to the burden that teachers and coaches and counselors and everyone is feeling. Is there burnout? Absolutely. But there's this determination throughout this district that we're going to put our heads down, we're going to get through this. And it's been remarkable how positive people have been. Melanie has, has, can attest to this. Bailey Danielson says on a regular basis, as does Kirk, Kurt Halbach, and also Marion Campbell, one of our social workers, that people are feeling optimistic and they're feeling supported. And that's probably the best we can do, given these very, very, very difficult, stressful times.
I would like to bring the discussion back to Melanie's questions. Melanie, maybe just restate those quickly.
Okay, so the first question I brought up was, what, the first question was, you know, at what point do we feel like we would move from phase one to all online? And it sounds like to me, some of the things I'm hearing is if a school can't be staffed, that's one way we would go, all online. Is there any other reasons why we would go all online?
If we're seeing infections in the class.
Okay. So if you see?
Like of a large number of the people.
A large, large number.
Large number of the people who are quarantined.
Okay.
Test positive.
Okay.
From school exposure.
From school exposure.
Exposure at school, not necessarily in the community.
So if we're seeing kids getting quarantined and all of a sudden we are seeing big numbers from the quarantines and such.
Who test positive?
If we're seeing that the school is a source of the spread.
Okay. Then the other question was, coming up with Thanksgiving break, how do we feel about moving, staying in phase one until Christmas break?
So I wanted to comment on that. I mean, the reason we moved to phase one in the first place was because of our case counts in our school and a recommendation from the health department. And if we're not seeing that go down quite yet, and then we might have the numbers to go back to phase two technically when break is over. But I have a question, are, are we going to be getting reports over the Thanksgiving break on, so, so if we don't have the numbers over Thanksgiving break?
It could be relatively low on November 30th because we're not going to have as many, it depends on, I guess, what's going to be happening in the community. It just keeps going up and up. We could still see that. But it could be relatively low and then with the Thanksgiving break, all of a sudden we'll see numbers go back up. These are all conjectures and we don't know what the future holds, but that's kind of what we're seeing.
But if we base on what we've seen historically, after any kind of holiday or break, we've always seen some kind of surge in numbers. So based on, on that.
A couple of days of a lull and then they increase fairly dramatically.
Based on that, if we start back in phase two again, I foresee us having to go right back to phase one and then we're in, in that area of inconsistency again. So it may just make the most sense to just stay in phase one until we can know for sure and kind of watch those numbers that we're anticipating after the break.
Melanie, if I may, I might want to modify the question a little bit, just to say that if the numbers at the beginning of next week, so just before we go away for five days, if the numbers don't seem to be on the decline, then I would like to suggest that at least we come back on November 30th in the same phase that we're leaving next week. So we would, if, assuming that we're still in phase one and the numbers are not coming down significantly at that time, then we would come back after Thanksgiving break to phase one. Then, like I said, the, the committee meets every day and we track that data and we work with the health department on their recommendations for whether or not there are any adjustments that need to be made. So that's, that would be my suggestion about how we do this, but, but.
McKay?
So just to be clear, so I, I, I like the idea of site-based management and, and I can, we're talking phase one for, for secondary. Because phase two in elementary has stayed, right? We've stayed longer in phase two in our middle schools. So by school, so wherever the school is.
Whatever the school is, by next Monday or Tuesday, based on where those numbers are, we're looking just at the two high schools in particular.
We could come back for a week and, and have another week and we'd, we'd proceed with the next week in that. And then if we're below the numbers at the end of that week, then we, you know, then we change back to, to that because that, that's, that seems, that seems fine to me. I mean, we'll, we'll, as long as it's, I mean, what people haven't understood is not just, people look at schools and we know we're distinct districts, but, but, you know, five days a week, you know, in Springville, four days in Orem. And as long as there's a reason that we're there and we're not, it's not that the, the school, I don't want to get into that situation where the school board is guessing that it's going to get bad. I, I want it to be, that decision to be on, on reaction to a situation.
That's why, based on what's going to, not happening, what happened today, but a week from today.
Aren't, aren't our numbers going to be artificially low anyways on that Monday? Because we won't have counts from, for five days.
We're talking the Monday before Thanksgiving break.
Okay.
But, I mean, some of this is, is the math. So we know who's had cases confirmed in the last week or so. We know who's going to be dropping off within their two-week timeframe by the 30th. But if we do get a lot more cases in these next few days, they won't drop off by the 30th. So we can already project on those, we might already be above 15. Now, if we can project that it looks like we're going to be under 15, just barely, well then maybe we want to stay where we're at. If we're going to be way below 15, then that's another conversation. I, I do have some agreement with McKay about, like, I, I want to have faith in our community. I hope that people have seen with the new ask, well, the ask from the governor a good week or so ago, plus us having to move so quickly back to a phase one in our two high schools, that people are seeing that they are not the exception to the rule and we all need to follow the guidelines. And I hope people will take that seriously over Thanksgiving. So I don't want to project too much of whether people will or not, but I do think we can follow a lot of the math where we're already at to determine where we end up on the 30th.
So what I'm hearing is that on a school-by-school basis, it looks like we will stay when we come back with the current phases in the schools. Then we need to get some good data and take a look and see whether there would be anything that would justify a change in those phases.
Based on what we see next Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, then that's what I meant. I, the most significant thing I've heard from Todd was the fact that multiple changes between phases are just as disruptive for students as other issues. And I'm concerned about a lot of bouncing back and forth. And the more stability we can have in terms of the phases that we are in, will be better in my estimation, also for the students and for their learning. I mean, well, particularly at this time of the year where there are so many holidays and there are enough disruptions anyway, any stability we can provide would be really good.
So one, one thing else that I think we need to make clear is that I think we're expressing good guidance. I wanted, I would want to think that the safety committee can believe that they're acting with the school board's authority and that we don't have to have another meeting.
Right, and that's why I'm having this discussion now.
And, and that authority is clear. I, I think that that, I, I think that we're, we have enough experience and we, we have good representation from the school board and we believe in our professionals that when they make a decision, they can act with the, the authority of the board. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to, to everyone that.
And maybe perhaps in the business meeting, we should formalize that so that we're all on board with the safety committee. That way we don't have to have an additional meeting.
I feel like we've already formalized that though. We said when we moved to phase two for the secondary, that at this point, it was up to the site-by-site safety committee basis. And I feel like Melanie's just asking for our input, but not a formal decision on anything.
Right, I, I just want to know where, where you all stand.
Okay.
So that I'm, when I go with the safety committee, will?
That you can represent.
Yeah, have a representative.
Well, and I think that functionally, given the fact that we've been dealing with this on a school-by-school basis, kind of implies that anyway, this is being, the way it's being handled right now is the data is before the safety committee, the safety committee discusses it, Melanie updates the board on this, gets your feedback. It's not a vote, we don't conduct votes like that or, or, but it just gives us an indication whether or not we're feeling like we need to go that direction and then the board then is made aware of it. So I, I think we're in a good spot. The system we built right now seems to be working and I can't imagine that changing a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. That sounds good to me. So I'm just, we'll plan on with the safety committee, looking at the numbers on next Monday and Tuesday and give you guys an update.
Okay.
Can I ask one more quick question, I guess maybe of Doug? And this is going way back to a conversation that we had at the beginning of this topic. But shouldn't we already be able to know who's eligible to test early under those guidelines that the state gave us for those who can test early? Do we have any kind of percentage on how many of our quarantines are eligible to test early and come back early? Because that should give us an indication of how many of our quarantines were traced back to our schools.
The health department does have that information.
They do.
Share that with us. In fact, every day, every day when the health department talks to us, or if not the health department, then, then our nurses who work for the health department, they'll tell us who are the individuals who are currently out and when they're due to come back. So this is, we're tracking all of this. We have a pretty good picture. Just as an example of that, I know that there's been a conversation going around a little bit about, you know, when we hit the number 15, does that mean automatically we have to close the school? Well, you could say yes, but what it does is it automatically triggers the conversation with the health department. And then the health department says, well, today you've got 16, but two are coming off at the end of the day today, so tomorrow you'll be at 14. So there's no point in announcing that we're closing that school tomorrow. And given the fact that we're taking the health department's direction, that's how it's working. So they are tracking these things in terms of how long people are on, when they go on, how much time there is until they come off.
So I just want to just see, do a big shout out to everybody who's part of this safety committee team. We've got elementary ed, secondary education, student services, social workers, teaching and learning, technology, P E S P, P E A, facilities and maintenance, child nutrition, transportation, business, health workers, human resources, special education, communications, and a resource officer that are all in these, and I hope I didn't miss anybody. I got the thumbs up from Mr. Garrison, so.
Forgot yourself.
Oh, and a board member, so. But thank you so much for all the hard work that they've been doing. Oh, and a Board member. So, but thank you so much for all the hard work that they've been doing on a daily basis. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate, I appreciate all of the comment and the great discussion. I think, Melanie, you've got your marching orders, and so let's move forward.
Thank you, Board.
Item I, Consent Calendar. Prior to this meeting, each of you should have had the opportunity to have reviewed the Consent Calendar. Those are the minutes from our previous meetings. We will act on that during the business meeting. Our upcoming Google Calendar items, just a reminder that we have Thanksgiving on November 26th and 27th, Thanksgiving break, the District Office is closed. We have our Joint City Council-School Board meeting. That will be on December 3rd, Thursday, at noon via Zoom. We have a study session scheduled for December 8th, Tuesday, at 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM, our business meeting to follow. And then on December 15th, there is the PTA Presidents' and Principals' Meeting. That's Tuesday, December 15th, at 9:30 in the morning. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn study session?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's take a quick break, about five or six minutes.